Motion carries.
There's another one.
Okay.
I ask that one.
Victor Sanchez, right?
Hey Pastor, how are you?
Good.
I can't count before.
We're missing John, I guess he'll be here in a second. Drag him in, arrest him, bring him up. Go ahead Stella.
We need to say the Pledge of Allegiance, Pledge of Allegiance.
Peter Wychum, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberate to justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, our Pledge of Allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
The invocation will be given to us by Pastor Victor Sanchez from the International Christian Center.
Thank you. Let's close our eyes and bow our heads. Good Lord, Heavenly Father, we come before you with thanksgiving in our hearts, knowing that you're a good God, a merciful one and a powerful one. We ask you, Lord, that you bless this meeting with your presence. And we pray, Lord God, according to your scriptures, that say that we might make intercession and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and for all those in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives. So Father, we just ask you that you bless President Obama, that you bless President, I'm sorry, Governor Rick Perry, our Mayor Antonio Martinez, all the city commissioners, and also our sheriff and all the law enforcement divisions and teams. Father, we just ask you that you give them the protection, give them the wisdom in how to handle and solve all the issues on their agendas, that they may benefit our community, that we have a success service and build a better future for our town. Father, we ask you again that protect all our police officers and everyone who is present here, along with their families, and we just thank you. Thank you, Father, for the opportunity to pray for our city business meeting, in Jesus' mighty name, amen.
Amen. Just so for the purpose of the audience, Commissioner Samota texted and is running a little bit late, but we'll continue. Consent item number one.
Consent item A.
Okay, we have one. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We have public hearings, number two.
Number two, public hearing to discuss the city's proposed fiscal year 2013 budget.
I think we're gonna do it.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, if I may, I would like to have the tax rate item first.
Okay.
Please.
We'll read item three first. First public hearing to discuss the 2012 at Valorm tax rate for fiscal year 2013 of .72 cents per $100 valuation, which is 4.57 percent above the effective tax rate of 68 cents per $100 valuation.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, this is our first public hearing regarding the, to discuss the tax rate. And the tax rate that we are discussing is the rollback rate. The rollback rate is the highest tax rate that the City Commission can adopt without triggering a rollback. And this is something that we went ahead and published in the newspaper, we published the largest tax rate. If the city adopts the effective tax rate of 68.9621, we have a shortfall in the general fund of 241,109. If we maintain the same tax rate that we currently have, then we will have excess funds of 302,168, and this is in the general fund. If the city decides to adopt the rollback rate, which is 72.1129, then we will have a greater excess of funds in our general fund of 1,314,895. The tax rate distribution on the, this is the effective tax rate, as you can see on that schedule, we would, if we would go with the effective tax rate, then means the tax, the tax rate we actually decrease from the current rate by 1.57 percent. And obviously, there's this, if we go with this, with the effective rate, that means that the general fund or the city of Brownsville budget is not in balance, not balanced. The, again, toward the far right, it gives you some of the tax rates that the city has enjoyed or has had since 2004, all the way up to 2013. Again, 2013 that's shown here is the effective rate of 68.9621. The current rate is 70.0613. This, this particular analysis shows the general fund, assuming that the effective rate is adopted, and we would have a shortfall of 241,109. And of course, if this happens, that means our reserves in our, in our general fund would be only about 8 percent. Our policy has a 15 percent reserve, so we're below the, the policy. If we stay with the same rate that we currently has, have, that means that we would adopt a tax rate of 1.59 above the effective rate. You go to the right, we will see that the tax rate will remain the same, so the tax rate, as far as rates are concerned, will remain unchanged, and that would show a zero, 0 percent increase. Again, this is the very, on the second slide there, you have the 2013 staying the same as the 2012 tax rate. If we adopt, or the City Commission decides to, to adopt the rollback rate, rollback rate is 72.1129, if you compare the rollback rate with the effective rate, there's an increase of 4.57 percent between the effective rate and the rollback rate, and the difference between the current rate and the rollback rate will go up to, it's an increase of 2.93 percent. What does that do to the general fund with a rollback rate of 72.1129? That means we will have excess funds of 1,314,895 in, in our general fund. This particular slide shows the, the tax, property tax increase. If you, you look at the effective rate, which is at the left hand corner, of 68.9621, and, and this, this shows different steps, half a penny all the way, all the way through the rollback rate, and it shows the percentage increase. If we go with a half a penny, it's .73 percent, one penny is 1.5, 1.45 percent, et cetera, et cetera, all the way to the end of the rollback rate of 72.1129, which is an increase of 4.5720, the effective rate and the rollback rate. This is what, this particular, if we stay with the, with the rollback, with the current rate, we will be generating 566,352 dollars more in levies, and that's because of, there's a change in the tax rule, there was an increase in tax, of the tax rule about three and a half percent, and that's, that's the reason why you see a 566. This is the actual levy, we will look at it, because this includes frozen tax levy of homesteads, but the increase in levy stays the same, except that the levy is higher, because in this case, we are including the, the freeze that, that is allowed to, based on a law that we have whereby over 65 are, their taxes are frozen. So, as a result of this law that took effect, if we adopt the, the effective rate, the levy that we lose on the freeze from those over 65 is 504,527. If we adopt the same levy that we have, same tax rate that we have right now, the loss in freeze is 559,313, and of course, if you go with a rollback rate, the, the freeze, the lost in freeze increases to 661,570. This particular slide shows, I guess, our citizens as to how much more they would be paying if we adopt certain tax rates. If we go with the effective rate, it's a 50 cent increase, and that's based on, on an average taxable value of a residence, home state in Brownsville. It went up from 81,050 a year ago to 82,415, so there's a 50 cent increase. If you go with the, with the one cent, I know it's, it's kind of missing it, it's one cent above the effective rate, you go up to 824, all the way up to 2597, if you, if you go with the, with the rollback rate. And that's how much more a person would pay for a household or homestead, value at 82,415, that's the average value in Brownsville, it'd be 2597 more a year. That, that concludes the, this is a public hearing, Honorable Mayor, we, we were gonna follow it with another public hearing on the, on the budget as, as we move along. Again, this is just a public hearing to discuss the tax rate.
So we can distill down that, and just in hopefully layman's terms, one, you're looking at a rollback tax rate, which is by law, you have to present this to, to the people of Brownsville as a taxing entity. The second one would be keep the same tax rate as we had last year with no increases. And if there's an increase in your taxes, it's because your, your appraisal of your property has gone up, not because your tax rate has gone up.
Correct.
And then the third thing that I think is important for the folks of, that are watching that may not be here, is that when you say, someone like me who's over 65, my homestead is frozen, in other words, no matter what I paid last year when I was 65, then that will be frozen, but only for my homestead. If I have other properties that are not my homestead, then they will be subject to the same appraisal and the same tax rate as everybody else, correct?
Very well.
Okay.
Well put.
Since this is a public hearing, I just want to make sure that everybody understands it, and that there's nothing that's saying that the tax rate is going up unless we adopt a tax rate higher than we did last year, but otherwise, it stays the same. So, does everybody fully comprehend all that? Okay. Does anybody else have any other comments to us? Okay, then, then I guess we'll have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And just to add, there will be another public hearing on this tax rate, there are two, two hearings are required, and we will have that on September the 4th.
Okay. And I will not be here September the 4th, so good luck commissioners. No, it'll, it'll be fine, but you have the second reading next Tuesday, so it's by law, is what's required, okay?
Item number two. Item number two.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Public hearing to discuss the city's proposed fiscal year 2013 budget.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, this particular slide shows the entire city of Brownsville budget. That includes not only the general fund, but also includes all the, all the funds, all the operating funds. We, we show revenues of 126,967, and then expenditures of 125,953. That's all, all the funds. And this particular slide shows by, by fund on the revenue side, and these are all operating funds, from the general all the way to the Gulf, Gulf, Brownsville Gulf Center, and total, excluding transfers, we're not including transfers that come in and that are made between funds, of 126,96766 in revenues, of all funds. For expenditures, we have 125,963871, general fund being 88 million. Debt service is number two at 15,263766. The proposed budget includes 3 percent cost of living adjustment for all fire and police collective bargaining employees, does not include a, a cost of living adjustment for regular seat employees. And again, this is something we talked earlier, that we're beginning with 2007, the City Commission adopted whereby we would, we would freeze a, a homestead for those that are over 65. And again, I, I explained that, if we adopt, depends what time of, depends what type of a tax rate we adopt, those are the losses that we would actually see that we're not gonna generate because of the, of the freeze. 504,527 for the effective rate, 559,314 for the current rate, and 661,570 for the rollback rate. One of the areas that, some of the things that have been requested was one, was from the Brownsville Museum of Wine Arts, requested $75,000. If it is granted, it is not in the budget right now, if it is granted, it will be charged to the general fund. One area that we need to look at very closely is obviously the utilities, services that are provided by the PUB, and as far, also the, the cash transfers. So that's something that we monitor very, on a monthly basis. If we can cut back on utility usage, that means that the, that the transfer from the PUB obviously is gonna increase. We have a, 20, for 2013, these are all estimates, again, if we use more in utility usage, references, we have 4.6 million, if that goes up to 5 million, that means that our cash transfer is reduced by the amount that, of additional utility usage. So it's very important for us to monitor some of our utility usage, not only on all our, on all our buildings. One of the areas we look at very closely is sales tax, we are at 2.93 percent above last year, but we're only .14 percent above the budget. We, doing for 2013, we, we were very conservative as far as our budget estimates for sales tax, because this is something, it's, it's an area that, one, one month it goes up, one month it goes down, so it's, it's, I, I, we're probably looking at about a 3 percent increase for the coming year. In other areas, the, the bridge, we've had a good year this year, a lot better than previous years, and, and that's because of the activity that's, that's happening at the port of Brownsville. This is the veterans' bridge, this is for all the trucks that, that use the, commercial trucks that use our, that, that bridge, and it's, it's been good. We, we budget for 2013 1.7 million. We're sort of taking a risk here, we have 1.6 budget for 2012, we are gonna exceed that amount, so hopefully by 2013, we can reach that 1.7, assuming that we continue with the activity that's, that's occurring at the, at the navigation district of Port of Brownsville. There has been activity of, of commercial trucks. Again, we discussed earlier, if the City Commission decides to adopt the effective rate, which we are not promoting, we're not, that, that means that our deficit will be at 241,109. And there are some fund balances that now we are required to, to report to, there's the non-spendable, the restricted, the committed, the assigned. The unassigned is the amount of money that's the free money. And so we look at the free money, the free money, meaning that there has not been assigned to any other program, we're at 9 percent on the effective, if we adopt the effective rate, which is again below the, the policy, which is 15 percent. If we go to the, if we stay the course and have the same tax rate adopted that we currently have, then we do have an excess of funds of 302,168, and, and the, the reserve now is 9.6 percent. Again, if we adopt the, the, the 72 cents, then you will have 11 percent reserves, so our fund balance obviously increases. General fund, the majority of the cost in our general fund is in personnel. This slide shows the 12, 2012, 71.39 percent of our entire budget in the general fund is personnel. If we go to, to 2013, that number has jumped to 73 percent. So the majority of our cost in the general fund is related to personnel. We're a service-oriented business, we provide services, so that's where our majority of our cost is in, in personnel. One of the areas obviously that we need to look at very closely is the fund balance reserves at the end of the year, this is 2011, we had a 12.6 percent, 12.5 percent in reserves, again, we were below the, the, the policy, which is 15 percent. And if you look at the, the fund balances in 2011, we did decrease by 880,000. And it, I take the trend for 2012, once we, all our books are closed for 2012, we're also gonna see a decline in our fund balance. One of the areas that we always stress is we wanna maintain good reserves, is because unexpected costs that come our way, and particularly the storms in 2008, we had Hurricane Dolly, we spent 2.6 million, we only got reimbursed 1,142. We did get audited just recently in March of this year, and it's very likely we're gonna get an additional 214,430. That's, has not come in yet, the auditor was very positive, he thought that we were very, very good of getting it, so, so, so that's something, and then, again, that's something we need to look at very closely, it's things that are unexpected, that, and it's always good to have reserves. Going, going, that's the, that's the general fund. Now, the convention tourism fund gets funded from the hotel motel tax, as well as other sources, because we do have the event center, the event center rentals. And then, at the bottom, shows all the expenses that are allocated, these are the same expenses for all the entities that we allocated in 2012, the 2013 numbers stay the same, the Visitors Bureau, 525, 525,000, Dallas Board of Zoots, 400,000, and down the line, every, everyone gets the, gets the same from the hotel motel tax. The Community Development Fund, these are all federal funds that I'm not gonna spend time on, we've already gone over. Again, the non-bonded debt, 11,663. Debt service, that's an area that, this is the fund that pays all our, our debt service requirements on a yearly basis, and we're, our, our budget shows requirements of 15, 263. There is a fund balance, a nice fine balance in this particular fund. One of the things that we did this year, and we, we can go back, I'm gonna go back to the general fund, you'll see, I'm gonna go back to, just to show you, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at the 70 cents, you can see the property taxes increase of 1,755, and the reason why this occur is because we noticed that we do have some funds available in debt service, so what we did is when we set the tax rate, we're going to, I'm gonna go back. I'm gonna go all the way back to the tax rate. Notice how the, it used to be, if you look at the, at the, at the right-hand slide on the corner, right-hand, the bottom, debt service for 2012 was 27 cents. We are, we are moving forward with a 25 cents, so that means that the general fund got 2 cents more, debt service got 2 cents less, and that, the reason why we did that is because we did have excess funds in, in debt service, we also had changes in our, in our bond schedule because of the refunding, that allow us to have, to put more money into the general fund and put less money into debt service. And that's because we did have a, a change in the distribution between the general fund and the debt service rate, and that's the reason why we see an increase in our, in our property taxes. One area that we need to look at very closely is, we are planning to issue debt in the coming fiscal year for some commitments that, that we have, have, and those are the areas that we may have, probably add some monies for, for streets, and we would issue a cert CO. More than likely, we'll be, it's, we're safe to issue some COs, because looking at our debt service fund balance, we will be able to, to pay some of those, debt with some of those excess funds that we have. Moving over to other funds, in the landfill tipping fee, it's, it's balanced, 497,000 in reserves. Airport, this is a, this is an airport, a fund that we keep very close eye on, we always, like any other fund, we always wanna make sure that, that we don't have, we don't leave a fund in the, in the deficit, so we do have transfers. In this, this particular year, 2013, we have a transfer from, going from the general fund to airport of 1.6664. The majority of that 1,664 is related to fire, the fire department, the fire department at the airport, takes about a 1.2 million to, to run the, the fire department at the airport. So the majority of the transfer is coming, is from the, from fire, fire, fire operations. This is the, the bridge fund, 1,750, and then the motor vehicle parking system. Again, if this fund falls short at the end of the year, the general fund will, will contribute to make sure that the fund stays in the black. The transit system, we were fortunate that we were able to, for the next fiscal year, we'll be able to use monies from the federal government for operator assistance, which is 50 percent. Next year, we'll, we'll, we'll get 2,72,000 from, from the, from the feds. We also have operator assistance from the state of 517,000, so really, the cash transfer to run or to operate the transit system is about 864,000, cash transfer from the general fund. There were new positions, they were not funded, we are looking at some positions in the budget, and I'll cover them shortly. Oh, I didn't have them. There are some positions that we probably gonna be bringing to you, to you probably before the budget gets adopted. Few positions that, right now, we have enough monies to cover those, we will discuss that with you probably at our, at our, at our next meeting. Now, this concludes, there's a public hearing, Honorable Mayor, so.
Okay. Any questions on this part?
Pete, do you attribute that, that $200,000 shortfall to not operating within our means or just previous liabilities that the city already had? Or is it a combination of both? What?
Well, it's, obviously, we don't have, we're not generating the revenues, and expenses are going up. Remember, I did indicate that this particular budget for 2013 includes the cost of living adjustments for the fire and police, which takes quite a bit of our budget cost as far as personnel. And other than that, that's one of the main reasons. There's been additional cost in personnel cost that we didn't have. You know, every year, it's going to be going up. It's a three-year contract. We're going into our second-year contract. We got one more left. And that takes a chunk, big chunk of our budget. But we do have increases in our sales tax, not very much, but about 3%. We do have increases in the bridge to make up for some of these expenses. And of course, fees and services are a little bit also have increased.
Okay. Well, something I, if you have time, that I'd like for you to do is maybe for the next hearing, present the cost-saving measures we've taken, just so the citizens know that we're trying to save money and we're trying to avoid a tax increase. I mean, I know traffic is changing out the traffic lights to LED lights to help out with the light bill. So we can get just a small report or list on the cost-saving measures we're taking. That'd be great.
That's great. We have seen a decrease in our utility usage, in particular, the Plaza building. It used to, I think our expenditure at that time was about 120,000 a year. Now we're below 100,000 because of the green efforts that we've done there. We're also doing changes here, the traffic lights. Obviously, we use less utilities, our transfer from the P U B. And we have seen an increase in the transfer from the P U B this particular fiscal year '12, and we're going to see the same amount in '12, '13. Again, as long as we maintain, cut those costs in utility usage, we see, it's to our advantage because our transfer from the P U B increases. So we will certainly bring that to you. We also saw our workers' compensation rates are going down. So that's the reason why our expenses in personnel went up, but not that much because of some savings in the workers' compensation rates. We are, a few years ago, if I, I don't have the schedule, but I can certainly present that to you next week, we have actually dropped as far as workers' compensation expenditures. And this happened over a period of time, not from one year to the next. But at one time, we were spending over $2 million in workers' comp. We're down to less than a million. So over a period of time, because of the measures that we've taken, the training, the, obviously, T M L is definitely helping us with some of the training, and that definitely has shown a major decrease in our expenses as far as workers' comp. So that's something that we can certainly share with the City Commission next week and with the public.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Pete. I think that it would be well noting that the tri-chair of United Brownsville, Commissioner John over here, was sitting at a conference today and listening to a gentleman by the name of Oliver Porter. And I think the concept of a private-public partnership was brought forth that I think we need to explore. Basically, it was a proposition that you can use the, maybe time to take a look at the model that we're using as a city administration, and perhaps maybe take a look at some improvements that we can have with efficiencies at various levels, not at all levels. So Commissioners, hopefully, we'll try to get you a copy of the book that this gentleman wrote. But we'll also try to see we can bring him back down. He did not charge a fee to be here, just the expenses. But I think Pete and Charlie and Jeff were there today. So they got a kind of a flavor of how we can do better, and so, and talked about the budget. So let's go ahead and plan that whenever we pass this budget, but let's kind of look at it for a whole year ahead of time as to where we can do some cost-saving measures, so that the public knows exactly which way we're headed. Okay? If I don't hear anybody else, we can have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm going to take a point of privilege here for allowing Commissioner Gallon to do two things. There's one thing I'd like for her to mention about the magazine that's sitting in front of you, Commissioners, on Texas Town and City. And then the other thing is that there's a gentleman as we speak by the name of Mr. Penelosa Gil, that is actually speaking at the Camille Playhouse today. Some of the Commissioners, Commissioner Samora was listening to him this morning. All the directors from the city were there this morning, as well as Commissioner Gallon and myself. But I wish you would make an announcement with that regard.
Sure. Gil Penelosa is the director of Eight to Eighty Cities, which is a not-for-profit out of Toronto. He is, was the Parks Commissioner in Bogota years ago when they did a great number of very innovative and creative things that served their people, empowered their people, raised their self-esteem, and really provided things in an area that is a lot poorer than Brownsville for their people. So he gave us a view of building your community for people and not for only cars, but for people. One of the things he said was if you build your community for cars, you're never going to win that battle, because more cars will breed more cars will breed more cars. And none of that encourages or inspires community building and the value of our people. So he is going to be speaking in McAllen tomorrow. He's going to be back on Thursday. Thursday morning, he'll be speaking at I-Tech to a group of U T B T S C students. And Thursday after evening at 7:00 PM, he is speaking at the University at Set B Auditorium. If you missed his discussion today, please come on Thursday evening. I promise you will be energized and really see the world in a different view. With respect to, and it's free. With respect to the magazine in front of the commission, everyone should check out this month's Texas Town and City. On page 26, you will find that Brownsville is the feature article for what we did with building a better block at Market Square. Everyone participated, everyone enjoyed, and now we are being celebrated and announced across the state, and this is very exciting. We are planning our third Better Block on September the 15th at Market Square, and then we will move to another location. So please be aware, come down on September 15th, and keep in touch, because we'll be moving and continuing to revitalize one block at a time as time goes on.
Thank you very much. Can we go to item number five?
Action to award a contract for landscape design services for Market Square and alley renovations.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, as we continue to revitalize downtown, we are in need of the services of landscape design services and also engineering services. Plan Department worked closely with the purchasing department to solicit a proposal from our first one, which is SSP Design, the next firm on our rotation list. Our proposal is for design services of landscaping and master planning of the development of Market Square with construction specifications and construction administration. The proposal is for 57,500. Funding is in place. We ask for your approval of this proposal.
The funding is coming from where?
The funding is coming from miscellaneous revenue that is budgeted.
This is the landscape that's required, and this is Scott Wojcicki's firm. And so it's necessary to continue forward. What we have is, we have Priscilla Rodriguez and Larry Loft along with a contractor that are doing some work within the city market. The funds for that renovation was given through a 4B, and so we're seeking the approval of this contract. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Number six?
Consideration in action to award a contract for downtown alley wastewater improvements.
Also, for the downtown Market Square revitalization, we need to improve before any new papers or street reconstruction needs to take place. We need to improve what's underground. And with this project, P U B will upgrade all the water lines and shore lines, one block at a time. But this proposal is, we're soliciting, asking Naismith Engineering to do all the construction specifications and construction administration. The cost of this proposal is 89,500. We're asking for your approval of this. This is also coming from miscellaneous revenue that has been budgeted.
Motion approved. Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm ready for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.